Councilmember Hosnick.
Here.
Councilmember Monson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Mayor Bane.
Here. Our next item this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would invite you, if you would like to join us, to stop your video. You can do so by just clicking the button in your bottom left-hand tree. Dan will present an image of the flag and I'll lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Which stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. And I, before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I would like to ask for accommodation. If we could slot the discussion agenda item 6A, which is the 2019 audit presentation, ahead of our regular agenda this evening, put it in as a, and let's just slot it in as a discussion item because it's not a, it's not, it doesn't require any sort of action. And if we could tuck that right before the regular agenda, makes great use of Mr. Meyer's time as part of that audit presentation. And if anybody would, if I could get a motion to approve that amended agenda, I'd appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that change. Moving the discussion item up to before our agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Monson and a second from Councilmember Hosnick. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard, I can't see, I'm sorry, I can't see all of the people. Is Councilmember Gerard here and I missed him?
Councilmember Gerard is not able to join us this evening.
Absent, sorry about that. Councilmember Hosnick.
Here, or I, excuse me.
Councilmember Monson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is our open forum. Dan, do we have any submissions for open forums this evening?
There are no submissions for the open forum tonight.
Excellent. We will move on to our consent agenda council before you. We have a consent agenda items A through M, and I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull items C and D.
C and D as in dog?
Yes, please. And with that, I'd make a motion to approve items A, B, and E through M.
Is there a second?
Second motion, Madam Mayor.
Motion and a second. Karen, can we have a roll call on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Hosnick.
Aye.
Councilmember.
I think that was me, aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Consent agenda items are approved, except for those items that we moved down to the agenda. Let's pick those up now and let's do former consent agenda item 7C. Kathy, I don't have that right in front of me, so if you can lead us through that discussion.
These were just minutes from the June 15th meeting and I wasn't present. So.
Thank you.
Council workshop and special meeting.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion, we approve items 6C and 6D as printed, as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hosnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Monson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Abstain.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. And those items are approved. So we are going to skip down to our former item 8A, which are, which is our first discussion item this evening. And Sandy, I'll let you tee this up. I know we've got Mr. Mayor from Bergen KTV with us, but I'll let you tee it up from here.
Sure. I'd like to introduce to you Matt Mayor. He is from KTV. They did our audit for 2019. And he is going to do a fantastic presentation for us all to explain in detail what happened during that audit and the results of that audit. So with that, I'd like to introduce Matt Mayor.
Thanks very much, Sandy. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the invitation to present tonight. You receive a stack of materials from our firm that represent the final product of the 2019 audit. I've summarized them in this PowerPoint presentation and you're welcome to wade through the materials as I go through it, but I think this presentation will be a good way just to see the high level. And if you did have specific questions about the materials, I'd be happy to address those anywhere along the presentation this evening. As you are all aware, the city has a responsibility each year to prepare financial statements for the public. Our role as your auditors is to be independent of the city and to test, examine, and ultimately give an opinion on those financial statements so that users can be assured of their accuracy. We do that through an independent auditor's report in front of the comprehensive annual financial statements. And this year, as in years past, we're providing an unmodified or a clean opinion for you. That means that the numbers we're going to be looking at in a little bit are a true and accurate picture of the city's financial position to end the 2019 fiscal year, as well as the results of operations for that year, the revenue that you received, the expenses that were paid. We also issued another report related to legal compliance. The audit reports all go to the Office of the State Auditor, who has responsibility or oversight for the municipalities in the state of Minnesota. Along with the financial audit, they asked us to test the city on statutes that apply to municipalities in Minnesota. I'm talking about things like conflicts of interest, contracting and bidding, how you're depositing and investing your funds. And if we had any issues with that, we bring them out through our legal compliance report. And we had none for the 2019 fiscal year, so a clean report there as well. We also look at internal control. Internal control is the policies, the procedures that you have in place at the city of Forest Lake to safeguard the city's assets, as well as ensure accurate financial reporting at the end of each year. And if we have any thoughts or recommendations there, we'll provide them through our internal control report. We did have a couple this year. We made one audit adjustment to adjust some numbers in the books. And we also want to remind you that because of the small office staff that the city of Forest Lake has, we don't get all of the segregation of accounting duties we'd like to see. We usually like to see four or five touches on every single transaction that occurs in an ideal environment, but in a small office environment, we understand that's not cost effective and that the city has made a conscious decision to instigate some mitigating controls which certainly provide safeguards and not at the cost that additional staff would drive. I also want to make one point that the city goes above and beyond reporting the basics when it comes to your finances. You prepare what's called a comprehensive annual financial report. CAFER is what I refer to as. And this is something you've done for the last 14 years. And you submit this to a national organization called the Government Finance Association for recognition. A CAFER is the most complete transparent presentation that a local government can make. And by receiving award as you have from the last year, you are showing your dedication with transparency and accountability. Any answer that a citizen has regarding the finances can be found with the report. Significant amount of work over and above, over and above the basic reporting required. So recognition to your finance team for that. And I think a good time as well to thank your entire finance, entire administration for all their hard work throughout the process under the leadership of your finance director, Sandy. Kind of an unusual year this year, trying to do everything remotely, but we ultimately still have a very strong and a good product for you to show you here tonight as a result of these numbers and these reports. So we want to thank you for that. With my remaining time tonight, I'd like to provide you just a little bit of financial analysis to give you some perspective from our firm's eyes on how the year went for 2019. I'm going to look at the general fund with you and then I'm going to look at each of your utility funds. I choose these funds because as council members, you have probably the most input when it comes to the operations of these funds. And as citizens who might be listening in tonight, these are the funds that you interact with the most. These are the funds that have your police department, your fire department, the streets, your water, your sewer utility, what you know the city of Forest Lake for. When we look at the general fund, it's best looked at in the context of the budget. And if I use two measuring sticks to determine whether you had a successful year, the first measuring stick in the general fund is whether the budget that you as a council approved was actually executed on for the year by administration. That's where a good governance lies. You as council set the parameters and it's administration's job to make it happen for you. So let's take a look at how 2019 went for you. The budget for 2019 was balanced. You had $9.5 million of revenue and $9.5 million of spending. So if it was executed perfectly, we would anticipate that your financial position at the beginning of the year would be the same as it was at the end of the year in real balance. If we look at the actual results for the year, revenue came in better than anticipated by about a quarter of a million dollars, $9.7 million overall. During 2019, the market was very good for fixed income securities. And as a result, your investment income was considerably better than anticipated. And you also outperformed when it came to development activity, licenses and permits and charges for services over and above the budget estimates that you had. So you were positive when it came to the revenue budget. When it came to spending, administration did an excellent job in keeping expenses for running the city within the parameters that you gave them. You authorized $9.5 million in spending. It actually came in at $9.3 million. That's $213,000 under budget for the year. And one point I want to make there is that all functions of government, all departments in your general fund contributed that. Everybody from public safety to public works, to general government, to park and recreation, all of them came in under budget for 2019. So as a result of that, rather than your fund balance staying the same, you actually improved the fund balance or your financial health in the general fund for 2019 by $510,000. And you can see that here at the end of 2019, you had a little over $6 million in overall fund balance. That's the high point over the course of this five years in this particular graph. Now, that's one way to look at it in real dollars, but I would encourage you also to look at it as a percentage of spending. And that's the second benchmark that I would have you evaluate the general fund on for the year. And that's whether your fund balance is within the parameters that you as a council have established for yourself. The council has approved a fund balance policy that says you want to have 50% of a year's worth of spending in fund balance. And at the end of 2019, that number was 59%. So a very strong position to end the year with that surplus and at and above the parameters that you've established for yourself for financial health in the general fund for 2019. So the two measuring sticks I was going to use were was the budget executed? It was executed well. Revenue was over budget, expenditures were under budget, you had a $500,000 surplus. Second measuring stick, are you within your fund balance parameters? You are. 50% is the threshold you've established for yourselves. You ended 2019 with 59%. I think a very successful year for your general fund by all metrics that I used for you. Want to take a quick look at some of the performance metrics in the general fund. Revenue was actually down for the year about 2.5% or a quarter of a million dollars. And that had a little bit to do with how you were allocating expenses and where you put your municipal state aid money for road improvements. Some of the maintenance costs, the seal coating, the mill and overlay that you've done in the general fund in years past have been moved to a capital improvement fund, where I think is actually a better place to have them. The capital activity of the city should probably be outside the general fund. And I think mill and overlay probably falls into that because capital can swing from year to year and you want to see from a trend standpoint how you're doing on a consistent basis. And having that kind of taken out of the general fund makes some sense to me. So that's the reason for the revenue dip. Licenses and permits were down a little bit as well and the levy was a little bit up. So but overall, down about 2.5% on the revenue side. Spending was also down for the year. It was down about 6/10ths of 1% or about $50,000. Public safety was actually a little bit higher. That's in green here. You can see a little bit more was spent in 2019. There were some vacancies in public safety in 2018, which were ultimately filled in 2019. So staffing costs were a little bit higher than the prior year in the public safety department. And public works, which is the maroon portion of the bar here, that's down because that's where that seal coating and mill and overlay costs were in prior years. We've moved those to another fund within the city here. But that gives you some perspective on the performance and how we got to those numbers that I just talked about in the general fund for 2019. Why not wrap up the discussion tonight with a quick look at the levy and then your enterprise funds? I think we want to recognize that about three quarters of the revenue that your general fund receives and the success of your general fund is based on the levy dollars that you receive through property taxes from the citizens. And I think as council members, you can look at this chart and see that you've probably done right by your citizens as well. If we take a look at the purple portion of the bar, which is this one here going up, that represents the market value of the city of Forest Lake for the course of the last five years. And you can see after a couple of years of flat in 2015, 2016, it started to take off the last three years. This is your levy each of those years in orange, 8.3 million back in 2015, up to 10.2 million here in 2019. But you can see how flat that number is in relation to the market value. So the point of this chart is that the levy has increased, yes, but it has not increased at the same rate that your market value has increased or the taxable availability of the available taxability of markets in the city of Forest Lake during that time. As a result, your property tax rate has actually declined fairly significantly from a high of about 43.5% back in 2016, down to under 40% here in 2019. So that gives you some perspective on the history of the levy over the course of the last five years as well. Again, to wrap things up, a quick look at your water fund and your sewer fund. These funds are analyzed a little bit differently. We call them enterprise funds because they're intended to be run like a business. We are not putting levy dollars into these funds specifically. The hope is that the user fees or the monthly or the quarterly billings for these two residents and businesses are going to be enough to cover the cost of doing business in these funds. If you look at the orange or the green bars, which represent operating income with and without depreciation factor in, that gives you an idea whether these funds are generating operating income or not. And after some adjustments to the rates the last couple of years, you've stabilized the operating income in your water fund each of the last several years. And operating income for 2019 was about $75,000 after everything was taken into account. If we take depreciation expense, which is not a cash expense out of there, it was about $600,000. Now, that seems like a pretty solid profit or operating income for the year, and it is. And the year, and the fund did end the year with about $3.5 million in fund balance, which is a couple of years' worth of operating expenses with $1.8 million being spent in 2019. But unlike the general fund, where that fund balance is just there for operations at the end of each year, want to remind the council that the hope and the plan is that your capital needs for utilities are going to come out of this fund as well. So when you look at that $3.5 million fund balance, factor that in, set aside a specific amount for an operating reserve for contingencies and cash flow, and then make sure that the remaining residual is matching up with your long-term improvement plans, your CIP, your CEP plans, and ensuring that there's a capital plan in place associated with that. So when you look at that fund balance, you're going to see a large number, but understanding the capital needs are going to be there in the future. And in fact, during 2019, there was significant debt service associated with that. You can either pay for that capital upfront or you can incur debt for that. And this fund actually needs about $1 million a year to service the bonded debt that it already has. So an operating income even of $600,000 is, may not even be enough to cash flow the operations, as well as the debt service obligations related to capital. So a strong performance in this fund each of the last several years, but I would encourage future discussions at budget time and long-term planning time to match up that fund balance and that financial health with your capital plans in the utility fund. Very similar story in the sewer fund. It's just that the sewer fund's magnitude is a little bit larger. It takes more to run the sewer fund. You're paying Met Council for disposal fees, which are significant each year. And again, this fund, you made some rate adjustments the last several years as well to keep pace. This fund did have operating income as well, about $176,000 for the year, with depreciation factored out, about $857,000. But like the water fund, this fund also has significant capital needs and future renewal and replacement costs, and also has debt service to end 2019. The debt service costs in this fund are about $500,000 a year, so that eats up most of that operating income each year. And you're kind of at almost a break even level after everything is said and done in this fund as well. This fund ended the year with about a $7.8 million fund balance. So again, a strong number, good reserves for those capital needs. But again, just encourage you to set aside a portion of that for operations going forward and then figure out what your long-term capital needs and capital plans are for this and make sure that those are matching up with the financial health of the fund and the performance of this fund moving forward. So I'll leave it at that. Again, our thanks to the entire team at the city for the chance to work with you again in 2019. I think an excellent report, both from an audit perspective and a financial performance perspective. If you had any questions about the city's finances I didn't cover, I'd be happy to stay online and tell those answers for you.
Questions, council you may have for the Bergen KTV audit team? I'm not seeing any. I do have, so I have a couple, I have one question and then a logistics question. You mentioned an audit adjustment and I'm not sure I saw that in the materials, also may have missed it. Just what was Quipnall's version of the audit adjustment?
Yeah, let me take a look at that quickly, Sarah. I've got the details for that. It's in the communications letter. Yeah, it was related to the, the bond refunding and the activity associated with that during the year. If you recall, when City Hall was initially built, it was a fairly complex transaction. The bonds were actually in the name of the EDA. And then the, he pays rent to the EDA and then that rent is used to pay the bonds. During 2019, you refunded that transaction with city bonds. And now the City Hall is now owned by the city itself. The EDA is not involved. And there were a few tweaks we needed to do to make sure that that transaction reflected properly in 2019.
Very good. Thank you. And then I guess, Councilmember Beistrum, go ahead.
Just, I guess I do have one, just one question. You mentioned, Matt, kind of the internal control issue, which I know is an ongoing issue for us. But you mentioned that there were a couple of issues there and I caught the segregation of accounting duties, which I think we've historically had, given the low number of staff. What was the, what was the second issue?
The other was that audit adjustment. Whenever we.
Audit adjustment, okay.
We need to let you guys.
Great. Thank you.
And so then I guess my follow-up question is just around logistics. I know tonight that this was on just the discussion agenda. There isn't a request for council action at this point. Is the thought that that comes back on a consent agenda or is there another more broad discussion that we need for council approval?
Actually, that has to be approved by June 30th.
I'm sorry, say that again?
That does have to be approved by June 30th. So I guess we missed.
So we do, so we do need council action on this tonight. Are we, I'm looking at my Zoom of where's, where's Pete? Pete, are we able to just amend the, amend the agenda this evening to add that as an action item on the agenda?
That's exactly right, Your Honor. You'll need a super majority vote, but if all four of you agree, you'll be good to go.
Perfect.
Are we not meeting on the 29th?
Councilmember Beistrum.
Are we not meeting on June 29th?
It wasn't planned because this was our fourth meeting of the month. I believe this is in, June's an odd month where we've got that fifth Monday.
Okay.
Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not staring at my calendar, but I think this is our last meeting of the month. Is that right?
You're correct.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we make this item an action item and be able to vote on it this evening and get it cleared up before the 30th of June.
Motion to approve, amend the agenda to add this as an action item. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
We'll take a second from Councilmember Beistrum. And Karen, could we have a vote, please? A roll call vote, please? And this is, to be clear, this is a roll call vote to change the agenda.
Change the agenda. Councilmember Hosnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Monson. Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. And my apologies on that. I should have clarified that logistics question earlier on and we could have taken this, gotten this taken care of. So thank you for being flexible and changing that. And then before we entertain a motion to approve the 2019 audit report, just a quick thanks to the audit team for all of their work, especially in these unusual COVID times when everything is remote. Also, a great thank you to the staff. This is always a lot of work on your part as well. And you've all done a nice job of setting up the stage that we need to have later this evening when we start talking about 2020 budget. So if we're not in audit season, we're in budget season and it's great to be in a spot to transition. So thank you, everybody.
With that, I will entertain any other questions or a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, Council Hosnick, I feel very comfortable making the motion that we approve the 2019 audit report as presented this evening.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the audit report this evening? Not seeing any. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hosnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Monson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we will transition back to our other agenda items here. And I'm just, hold on just a moment. My screen got a little skewed. Here we go. Our next agenda item is what had been agenda item 7A, which is ordinance number 695 for the Common Bond Community Zoning Map Amendment. And Donovan, can you walk us through this, please?
Certainly. I'd like to present the zoning map amendment from Common Bond Communities, who's on the call, represented by Cecile Bedore. Len Pratt is the owner. Richard Palmer is a broker in the sale transaction. And Nick Coniff is the project architect. The, this is regarding a, you know, site that you've reviewed before. And this relates to Headwaters. The area that shown here, and the parcel is within Headwaters PUD. And it's just southeast of the transit center and the service, Harvard Creek Service Center. The application is to, to amend the zoning map from neighborhood commercial, airport overlay and the Headwaters Village PUD to, to the general mixed-use airport overlay and Headwaters PUD, Headwaters Village PUD. Shown here is a snippet of the zoning map, which you can see the neighborhood commercial in pink and the subject property is right up here. and the subject property is right up here. And that diagonal hatchet represents the PUD, Headwaters Village PUD, and its proximity to the airport, of course, has the airport overlay. The airport overlay does remain, is not proposed to be changed. And the zoning map amendment, you know, has the general mixed-use zoning map amendment request, as well as a PUD request that we'll get to with the next agenda item. The zoning code presents a series of criteria in which to create a findings of fact that relate to zoning map amendments. The the, you know, the staff memo has, you know, staff comments on each of these. In my review of them, there isn't any criteria that I can see that, you know, provides an adverse impact from the zoning map amendment. And the the staff recommendation is to adopt Ordinance 695 to affect that change of the menu of zoning map from, you know, Neighborhood Commercial to general mixed-use, with, of course, the overlay districts of Headwaters Village and Airport Overlay staying the same. With that, happy to take in questions from the City Council.
Council, any questions you may have for Donovan? A quick reminder, we've got two related items on the agenda this evening. This item for the, that we're talking about for the ordinance, and then we will, in our next conversation, talk further about the resolution for the PUD amendment. So let's limit conversation at this point related to the ordinance. Any questions for Donovan? Donovan, I could use, just refresh my memory on sequencing and what original plan, well, original plan was versus current plan. The movement of this to that mixed-use zoning area, is that aligned with what's in our current comprehensive plan but hasn't yet been adopted? We have, you know, we've approved the comprehensive plan, but we haven't made those zoning changes. Is this effect essentially just speeding up that zoning update for this parcel? Am I correct in that?
I believe that's a good summary, and I should have mentioned that. That with the 2040 comp plan, it was recently adopted by City Council, the future land use is mixed-use for this area. And essentially due to Common Bond's desire to get all the zoning in place, which helps with their scoring with the grants that they seek, they're, they're basically speeding up the process that would come through comprehensive rezoning that's going to occur with that, you know, to make the comp plan and zoning map consistent. And so, you know, this is, I would, I mean, it's nothing entirely certain, but it's, I would expect with a high degree of certainty that eventually this property would be zoned, the general mixed-use that the applicant is now proposing.
Thank you. And I just, I point to the mountain of work that we did as part of that comprehensive plan process on, you know, establishing those zoning areas and that, you know, I kind of go back to that when I look for, certainly the information you have in your staff memo for recommendation, and then also just our broader consideration, so, thank you, that's helpful. Any other questions for Donovan at this time? Or if not, I will entertain a motion, and this is for Ordinance 695, which is in your packet.
Mayor Bain, I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 695, the Common Bond Community Zoning Map Amendment for the Headwaters Platte, PID 29.032.21.12.007.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilmember Beistrum and a second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion on this item? Not seeing any, Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson? Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion approved. And moving on to our related item this evening, it's Resolution 6222001, the Common Bond Community Headwaters PUD Amendment. Donovan, want to walk up to this one as well?
Certainly. I would like to continue with this Headwaters discussion. All three agenda items coming from me this evening relate to that area. And what what this PUD amendment involves is a consideration of the four-story, 53-unit apartment building that council has reviewed a concept plan of. And this one essentially seeks to replicate somewhat of the similar conditions with the Headwaters Landing Apartment 1, that's just north of this property that just recently was occupied. And what the PUD amendment is, is proposing a standards that would allow a multiple-family residential district within the PUD to allow a residential density of maximum of 25 dwellings per acre, which is above the 15 maximum dwellings per acre that the underlying zoning code allows. And increase the height, allow a height of four stories or 60 feet, whichever is less, is up from the current four stories or 55 feet, whichever is less. That additional, you know, height is needed, they found with the Headwaters Landing 1 for the elevator cab. And also to keep the building within contemporary standards for a room height and fitting all the mechanicals in. The, this same maximum of residential units per acre is found at Trailside. So we'd have about 25 dwellings per acre there. The other buildings in the area, the Forest Oak, 1, 2, as well as Headwaters Landing 1, those are within that 15 dwellings per acre. And the, and so what this does is basically create a whole, a new set of another development type for this Headwaters Village, Headwaters PUD. And that's, that's the first component of the PUD request. The, and this did receive a recommendation of council approval for this. Now, there's a second part of the request. And this comes from the owner, Len Pratt, of the current owner of the property. It relates to the Headwaters Original signage plan. And there is, much of this signage plan and other public improvements were removed in a 2012 Development Agreement Amendment. However, one piece was retained, and that's the subject of this request this evening. If you notice, there's a blue star, this is on your screen. This is at the northwest quadrant of the Headwaters Parkway and Highway 61 intersection. And this sign shown by the legend here was to be a three-part joint community sign, shown also in the PUD booklet, which would be, you know, rather nice amenity for that area. However, with that 2012 development agreement change, the, only a development identity or Headwaters Community Identity sign was retained for this, for that northwest quadrant of that intersection. The, the other, and this is the sign was shown in a 2007 approved site plan for this area. You can look and see here, there's an area, it's a triangle that's dimensions of 40 feet by 60 feet that shows the master development three-part joint community monument sign. However, when this plat was then then, sorry, is when it was approved, I believe this is the recorded plat, that easement area was, was not retained. And as shown it is not showing up. Sorry about that, but I mean, on the plat we have in our city files, that easement area is not shown. And, and so the Planning Commission discussion around this centered on that if this sign was removed from the development agreement, you know, and the PUD was amended, that the the sign probably would not come back. Once these things are removed, then there's little interest for the next property owner to adopt, include something like that, which is a community identity sign. It's not simply a, you know, monument sign devoted to a business or, you know, a set of businesses within that development. And then, in my thinking around that, which I did recommend approval of that request was that, right now, we have a situation where there is not an easement for that, that I can see. And we would essentially be, you know, having Mr. Pratt continue to look, you know, kind of force that upon another property owner, who may, who may wish that. There is a $10,000 escrow that the city has retained for this, and part of the request is to have that escrow returned. But it seems like it's a, putting the developer in a situation where there aren't really any controls that allow him to put that sign in without, you know, engaging negotiations and with another private owner, with the easement not being there. And so in your packet, there are actually two resolutions. The first one began on page 126 of your packet is the, you know, is the resolution that includes a third item there on the bottom of that 126 page that does vote for removal of the signs requirement and the return of the $10,000. This was a staff recommendation. In contrast, on the end, page 128 is a resolution that does not include that third whereas there. And so that would be a denial of that sign, sign removal request. So at this point, I'm happy to take in questions from City Council regarding this, this PUD amendment.
Could I have a quick point of clarification before we jump into more questions of substance? Donovan, at one point, you had mentioned two items, but there's actually three items on the request, right? One is the higher density, the second item is the five additional feet, and the third item is the sign, right? Those are the three kind of topics of substance, is that right, for consideration?
Correct, correct, I was grouping the two, the two apartment building requests.
Understood, thank you. Questions for Donovan this evening or staff?
Are there any sorry about that. Are there any height issues where the airport is concerned? What, you know, are there any, any concerns that are with the additional height?
No, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I estimate that the apartment building would have to be something in the range of 145 feet tall in order to even, you know, break the plane for that zone C, as the way it comes off the airport. Even the Headwaters Landing complied, the building that's there now, to give you some idea of what it would take, you know, for that plane to be broken and in violation of the height restrictions by the airport.
Good question, a flavor, a topic along those same lines. I'll interject here while we're kind of on this topic. So no reason from an airport safety perspective, was there anything that came up in staff review around fire safety or any other infrastructure considerations that we would maybe push on the five-foot request?
No, no, I mean, essentially, this is a, this is a fewer number of units, but it's my understanding, essentially, what Common Bond will propose is something pretty similar to Headwaters Landing 1. And, you know, it's, as far as fire response, I mean, you know, that will, that, there will be a full review of the site plan when it's submitted. And Chief Newman did review, and the project team did respond to concerns for fire truck access on the, the concept plan that was submitted in January. And the more recent one was turned out fine, as far as a preliminary review. As well as the, our airport planner will review the building using their modeling to ensure that, yes, it does comply with airport zoning rules.
That'd be my concern, make sure we talk to those engineers that deal with the airport every day there, so. And Mari, you asked, you asked a question I had in my mind too, was about the fire. I've asked that question many times on these higher buildings, you know, we covered, but taking care of that. So that was my question.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Well, I listened to the Planning Commission meeting, the recent, or the May 27th Planning Commission meeting. On both of these, actually, it was a little complicated, and I needed to unpack it, and it really helped the finding of facts. Thank you, Donovan, that was, that was a great, clear and comprehensive overview. And then further listening to the Planning Commission meeting to kind of unpack all of this. And they were, they were fairly adamant about this sign issue. And I, you know, I tend to look at our commissions, you know, through a trusting lens that I really feel strongly that they do their due diligence and are very thoughtful in their consideration of issues. And I, on this particular issue, I tend to agree with them about the sign issue. That I, I, you know, historically, it appears, you know, we, we we don't get these things back, we kind of lose this window of opportunity. So that's kind of where I'm landing. I mean, I'm in support of the, of the density and height variances, but the, but the sign issue, I think I'm aligned with the consensus of the Planning Commission on that one.
I have, go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I just want to echo the sentiment for Kathy there, the same thing. I would agree with that sentiment that we shouldn't lose this opportunity on the signage. So I know if Kathy was going that way on her vote, then I would certainly support her vote on that.
I just have a question on, a question to help me kind of kind of evaluate further the sign question. The comment was made in our council packet, and I did not watch the Planning Commission conversation on this. But it sounded like there was a member from Bell Bank that had spoke in favor of keeping the sign requirements. Is that also, does that happen to be the same location? Is that the property owner where the easement does need to be negotiated? Or is that not related?
No, the Bell Bank property, you know, the former Patriot Bank property, is Now, there the the Bell Bank property, you know, the former Patriot Bank property is west of the of this property. Where the the sign easement was supposed to be, which didn't get located, which is the monument sign. So, but it is true that, yeah. Chad Lindgren of Bell Bank did at the public hearing at the plan commission. Express, you know, support of keeping the sign.
I guess I would, I would kind of echo the sentiments that comes from everybody, some and council member hustings that have been expressed. And then also add that, you know, for some reason, there was a practical difficulty in reaching an agreement. If there was further action council needed to take at a later date. Always happy to reconsider, but for the time being, I I would agree that if we pull it off the table now, it's not coming back. And, you know, there have been other considerations made on this project to that. And those time, those community monuments are important, and there is no alternative source of funding if it if it goes away here. So I would like to see every, you know, option exhausted to make to have that happen as much as possible. And Donovan, thank you for, um, thank you for lining out two different resolutions for us to consider tonight. I mocked up my thoughts on resolutions, the first resolution, and then turned the page to say, oh, well, Donovan already did the work for me. So much appreciated on that. Other questions? I know we've got a number of members of the project team here with us tonight as well. I'm sure also happy to entertain questions if there are any. I don't see any questions. And again, the the two resolutions, there's the full resolution with all three components are on page one twenty-six of your packet. The shorter resolution with the two items over density and the additional five feet is on page one twenty-eight of your packet.
Mayor Bain, I make a motion to adopt resolution number zero six dash two-two dash two-zero dash zero-one. A resolution approving PUD amendment for headwaters landing planned you planned unit development. To include an increase to the maximum residential density to twenty-five dwelling units per acre. And to establish the following height restrictions, building height max maximum of four stories or sixty feet, whichever is less.
There is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a second from council member months on any further comments from council at this point? Seeing none, Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick? Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bystrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion approved. Many thanks to the project team for being here again. And thanks also for the planning commission on their thoughtful consideration. It's always, it's always great to have somebody lead a strong path for us.
Mayor, it's Cecile Bedore. Can I just say one thing?
You sure can.
Thanks. Cecile Bedore, I'm the executive vice president of real estate for Common Bond. You've been seeing Andy Hughes, who's our director of acquisition and development. He couldn't make it tonight, and I just wanted to say thank you. It's really nice to work in your city and our first headwaters has leased up in record time. Which goes to the need that is in your your city, and we really appreciate the support. We really appreciate that kind of the thoughtful feedback that we've received from your staff and the community. But this is sometimes the hardest part is to get the community support that we need. And your action will make our application that much stronger. So we really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the update and thank you for being here.
Yeah, sure.
All right, our next agenda item this evening is item. Seven C, which is the headwaters twelfth additional plat extension request. Donovan, this is you as well.
Thank you. Mayor members of council like to present the request to extend the headwaters twelfth edition final plat. This is something you also might be familiar to you. This is the. Was the this plat was extended. Last year on until ju- until June twenty-sixth of this year. This was needed because plats after council approval need to be recorded with a hundred and twenty days or they become null and void. At that time, the Excelure Group, the developer. Did wasn't prepared to, you know, build the build the public infrastructure. Or submit the financial required financials, which is the letter credit to ensure construction of those of that public infrastructure. And so at this. You know, right before the June twenty-sixth expiration, the the developer has. Filed written request to extend it to October fifteenth. In my conversations with Philip Sell from Excelure Group, he seemed optimistic that the project will go forward. And no more another another extension will not be needed. But the request now is from the developer to extend the plat. Life, I guess you could say, for headwaters twelfth edition to October fifteenth of two thousand and twenty. At this point, I'm happy to taking questions from city council.
Thank you, Donovan. Council questions for Donovan on this one? Councilmember Bystrum?
No questions, just to comment, given given the circumstances over the last several months. You know, this just seems like a reasonable request. You know, particularly if there's some assurances that we won't be met with ongoing extensions for this project.
I agree. Seems like a reasonable request, reasonable accommodation. Any further questions or I will and Donovan, you are, there is now, there is not a resolution tonight. It is just that we. The the motion requested is just to recommend an extension, correct?
Correct, yeah, there there is.
We approve, we approve extension.
Right, there's a provision in the zoning code that does allow council action to extend extend the the plat.
And Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the headwaters twelfth edition plat extension request. As outlined.
And I'll second it.
Motion from council member Bystrum. We have a second from council member Husnick. Any further discussion on this item? Not seeing any. Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bystrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, and approved, and that ends our regular agenda this evening. We do have a number of items teed up for our discussion agenda. Transitioning here to items, which is the item eight B, which is the two thousand and twenty first quarter financial report. Sandy, I believe you're going to lead us through this.
Yes, I am, and hopefully you can see the shared squirt screen shortly.
Yes.
Okay. This is something that we do on a quarterly basis for the first three quarters of the year. And now that the audit is completed for two thousand and nineteen, we can provide you with the accurate information. To analyze the March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty first quarter. And what this. Does is we compare our budgets and actuals from the prior year. To the budgets and actuals for the current year at the same point in time. So March of two thousand through from January to March of two thousand and nineteen, we're comparing to January through March of two thousand and twenty. So and then we put a percentage of of the actuals amounts coming in compared to the budgets. So this will kind, what this does is it provides a tool for us to kind of determine what what relationships. You know, there's, there's always relationships with that revenues coming in and how they're coming in and trends. And and so I'm going to go through this in in as much detail as I can without going through every line item. But looking at the revenues first, the taxes is something that we don't normally get for the first quarter. And taxes come in basically three times a year, one being we get an advance in June. Which the next quarterly report will show that advance coming in and as well as the prior year's advance. We also get payments in July. And we also get payments then come December. So the taxes are something that you're always going to see a zero percent at that first quarter, just because there's nothing coming in at that point in time. But we still do anticipate the seven point seven million. And and don't, you know, as long as no, you know, changes are made as far as the county goes. I don't everyone anticipate that as being any different. Looking at the overall with all the other line items, there was a few more. And and there's always going to be variances from year to year as far as when those collections are or or when things happen during the year. License and permits, there was a slight increase this year compared to last year, but pretty comparable. And then I'm going to go on to the charges for services. Last year, we did have a conduit revenue that came in, so you're going to see that big variance from the prior year. That isn't something that we're going to receive for this year. So so that's something that I I anticipate that the charges for services are in line with what we're where we're at at this point in your normally. And and looking at the miscellaneous revenue, that's where we have our interest revenue. And and a big part of being over or fifty percent of our budgets at this point in time. We even though we brought our budgets up a little bit compared to the prior year, based on what we thought was going to happen. I do anticipate that our interest revenue is going to be higher than than anticipated with with in in line to. You know, in relation to our budgets. You know, we're, we're not necessarily the ones where we can't as a governmental entity invest in stocks. So we're not going to be in that predicament as some places are. So I think it's in in my interpretation at this point in time. You know, we're in US treasuries, we're in municipal securities, we're in CDs. I think they were pretty safely invested where I anticipate that, you know, we're still going to keep in stride with what this percentage is going to end up being. And then going on to the expenditures, I'm just going to highlight a few items. You know, when when you look at this, I kind of look at, you know, i- if things really increase or decrease, you know, is is there a change in trend that happened? And I'm not going to go through each line item, but really the majority of of some of these differences really happens where, you know, we we bring our budgets more in line with what those actuals really are going to be. Or the actuals are becoming more in line with the budgets. But I'm just going to highlight a few just because some of the differences are a little bit higher than 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 others. And and one is the mayor and council, and really what that was was, you know, last year we had, we usually have some subscriptions. And dues that are recorded as prepaid, and we didn't reverse out that prepaid. So you're going to see that be more in line with the prior year, just because that expense isn't showing in this year at this point in time, but will be showing the next quarter. Like I said, most everything, the elections is another one that created, shows a big difference from the prior year. And that's mainly because we brought that budget up because it's election year. So because of the amount that we've spent compared to our budgets in that line item, it's showing as a lot less. But really, when when the time comes that we actually put the expenditures in there that need to be in there, it's going to be where we anticipate it to be in line with where the budgets are. The other one is in information technology. There was a a little bit of a increase compared to the prior year. And and that had to do with, you know, we've had to be responsible with the COVID. And and we had some technology that had to get. Purchased in order to make things happen and technology happen to to be able to work from home and remotely. And and there's also just, again, those variances are going to happen throughout the year in certain expenditures where it might happen earlier than in prior years. And and that's kind of what's happened at this point, too. There was just a multitude of of different things that happened where the spending ended up being a little bit earlier. The other thing is really the the parks programs, there was that addition of budgets that hasn't been spent yet. So so you're going to see just that variance just because of the fact that the budgets are there, but we haven't spent it. So really, all in all, what I see is 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 us being in line for the most part with with where we're at with the general fund. And. So I don't see any huge issues there. And then next one I'm going to go to is the surface water. And and this one, I found a few things, but I don't think it's going to be anything that's going to not. Create a problem for this fund, just some small things. Looking at the intergovernmental, we had put a twenty-five thousand grant, thinking there was going to be a grant coming in or a possibility of a grant. But that isn't going to hold true, so we're not going to have any any revenue source coming in unless there's some cleanup for the prior year. That may come in because of a grant from the prior year that we didn't receive the funds. But I I think we accrued for most of, or if not all of that in the prior year. So I don't anticipate any revenue sources coming in for that. However, I do think it's going to be offset because we also did not increase that interest earnings. So looking at at how much is coming in each quarter for that, you know, if it's going to remain the same as what the interest is now. I think that's going to offset that and we'll be at that break even point for the revenue sources coming in for this fund. And when you go to the expenditures, again, I don't see anything too crazy. The repairs and maintenance were higher than last year. And again, that has to do with spending before, particularly with repairs and maintenance. You don't know what's going to happen from one quarter to the next or from year to year, what's what repairs need to be made. So what what ends up happening is sometimes it's spent earlier than in the prior years. And I think that was the instance here, and it had to do with pond cleaning. So I think there's, you know, I think there's going to be room for the next few quarters to make adjustments to to make sure that that. You know, the bottom line is in line with where we need to be with this fund. And insurance, I am taking a look at insurance and doing some research on that because that looks a little bit lower than the prior year. So I need to make sure that we're charging this fund the proper amount of insurance or if we overcharged them last year, but I don't think that was the case. So we might have to be making some adjustments there for adjusting entries for this quarter, which isn't a a big huge amount, but just wanted to highlight that. And this is a. Graph that we provide each quarter. It looks a little bit weird right now because the way we that it's for user charges that we charge. This is going to be at zero during this quarter because we haven't charged anything for this year yet. So this next quarter, you're going to see the user charges coming in and and this is actually cleanup from audit to get us to the zero to that we collected from last year. So this is kind of, I don't know if it's meaningless at this point, but just to let you know that, you know, we're going to be providing this graph on a quarterly basis. Just to show you what those user charges are going to do. And the next one is the airport. Again, I don't see anything too drastic here either. You know, the miscellaneous revenue has to do with a a lot of the the AV gas and on charges. And 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 that fluctuates too from time to time, depending on when that revenue source comes in. So I mean, it's not a drastic amount, but I I think we we need to, you know, understand that that's something that's going to fluctuate from quarter to quarter. And I don't see it too drastic where it's going to, at this point in time, where it's going to create issues for me for for this fund. And then on the bottom, we'll see later as far as how it fluctuates from year to year for all of the revenue sources that come in for this fund. And I'll kind of explain a little bit more in detail of that. And looking at the. At the expenses, again, I don't see anything too drastic. In fact, I see us probably in a lot of areas in line more so with where our budgets are, you would think they'd be about that twenty-five percent again. You know, repairs and maintenance are aren't always going to be there or some other miscellaneous items might not be at that twenty-five percent. But I don't see anything, you know, more more so like, again, the timing fluctuations that happen from each quarter that we're not going to be able to predict. So if you look at the bottom on the chart that we are going to be providing on a quarterly basis. It shows the fluctuations in the different sources of revenue that come. um, it shows the fluctuations in the different sources of revenue that come in for this fund. Um, you know, I, I put the January, February and March of 19 and 20. And, and it's, it's going to fluctuate. And, and when you get down to the next quarter, you're going to see the fluctuations as well. So I, I just wanted everybody to be aware of that and, and understand that piece, that this will be communicated. We just need to, um, understand that the fluctuations are going to occur. And the next one I'm going to go through is the water fund. I did find one area in here. But for the most part, as far as the revenue sources go, I didn't see too much other than the interest earnings. And that went up considerably, but they had a bond. So that's going to gain some interest for this fund to pay for the projects. Um, again, that's a good thing because the interest will help us with those, those project costs. And hopefully this will continue. Um, this isn't not only for the bond, but there's other interest earnings that are coming in for this fund too, for the operating. Um, but the big part of it is going to be the bond and, and hopefully that continues and they get a good amount of interest that will help them out. And the expenditures, um, again, I, there's one area where, or a couple of areas, I will say. Um, no, one area on this one, the bond principal and interest. And what ended up happening, and we, we had to make a correction, um, because some of it actually is supposed to be for sewer. And so we're going to be making a correction and we get to the, um, the sewer, you'll, you'll see where that issue is. So we're going to be making a reclass entry to correct that issue, um, ongoing. Um, so you'll see that correction next quarter. And the depreciation, um, looks fine. Um, I don't see anything too drastic in this account or this fund as well. Um, you know, things are probably more in line as far as the wages and benefits go to, to where it should be at this point in time, um, than last year. And, and I don't, you know, there, there might've been less repairs and maintenance this year than last year. But again, that's one of those things that is going to fluctuate. You're not going to necessarily, um, you know, know from year to year what, what, what will happen in that area. So I don't see this, um, other than the bond and principal reclass entry. I don't see there being any issues with this fund as, as well. And again, this is that, um, that graph that, um, is showing, um, we don't have any revenue at this point in time. But you'll see in the next quarter that, that will happen in this fund. And last but not least is the sewer fund. And, and this one, again, the interest earnings are coming in, um, at, at a higher rate than what the budget show, which is a good thing. Um, we try to be conservative with that interest earnings, and I think it just goes to show, um, that, um, you know, PMA has done a fantastic job with our investing and investing it in the right places, um, safe places, um, which is doing us well right now. And, um, you know, we are going to be, I, I'm hoping to actually invite them in to, uh, explain to, you know, the council at some point, um, how they're doing it and, and what they're doing to, um, invest our funds. And connection charges, um, that's going to fluctuate again from year to year as well. Because that's, um, going to, you know, depending on projects that are happening and that type of thing, there's, there isn't going to be some connection charges as much as in the prior year, um, just because some of those things just didn't happen this year. So, um, we'll see where that goes in, in the next, uh, few quarters and, and, um, see what, how that relates to our budgets in the future. And the expenditures, again, here's where that bond principal and interest on the bottom is. We have to put some of that bond and interest, um, from the, it actually went into the water, but it should be in the sewer. So that correction will be made for next quarter. Um, but the other one is the depreciation. And, and a big part of why, um, we don't do this report until after the audit is done, is because you're going to get more accurate information when that audit is complete of, of some things that may highlight that you didn't know at the point in time when you did the budgets. And depreciation is one area where, um, it's, it's a little, going to be a little bit higher than what our budgets are showing. And, um, how we did our budgets for depreciation, um, we, we ended up not including a work in progress that actually turned to an asset in, in during the audit, when we did the audit preparation. So we recognized it at that point. So what we are going to be doing in this next following year, because I, I think there needs to be more checks and balances in that. And, and I think, um, when we get the new system in place, um, we're going to be doing it on the system instead of what, how we've been doing it is on a worksheet, which I think the checks and balances aren't necessarily there to catch some of this during the, during the budget season. So I think once we get that new system and, and be able to have the information readily available at all times, I don't think this type of thing will happen again. So just wanted to share, share that with you. Um, I think everything else, as far as what I can see, looks, looks good. I don't see any drastic, um, differences. So that is all I have for you at this point in time, unless there's any questions.
Thanks, Sandy. Council, what questions do you have of Sandy for the first quarter budget report? Council member Beistrum?
Just one on the, um, in the general fund in information technology, um, related to the COVID. Do, do we anticipate potential for some of that to be offset with the CARES Act dollars?
Great question. Go ahead.
Dan, did you want to?
Oh, yes, yes, we do. The answer is yes. We had to do a number of different things to get us all ready to do this remote stuff. So, uh, once we get to the grants and things like that, we will be looking to include a lot of the information technology items that we had to put in place, uh, under that expense.
I have a question around second quarter, but don't want to take away from the first quarter, um, topic before we talk about second quarter. Any other clarifications or questions related to the first quarter report? Um, so my, so this is thorough and this is thorough and helpful. Um, I'm sure I am like others in that I, I look at, no, to this, to the, I'm sure I'm looking at this like others in that the, you know, the, the last two weeks of the first quarter were kind of the beginning of COVID. I think the real telltale for us is going to be the second quarter report. Um, and so I guess I would ask that to the, you know, the extent possible, we're able to, um, speed up the close of second quarter. Um, I think we're going to be looking to that to help give us direction from a budget standpoint. Um, and whatever we can do to, you know, get that analysis locked in. Um, I know that you're looking at these numbers anyway for budgeting. Um, I think if I'm holding for that picture, because I think that paints is, is going to paint the more complete picture of where we are. Um, because I just, I know that there was a lot of happy path right up until mid, mid-March. And then, you know, the, the bottom kind of fell out. So I'll be interested just to know how the quarter looks and then also what our projections are looking like for the rest of the year.
Yeah. And how this, um, quarterly report works is, um, once we get our bank statements in July, I'll, um, you know, be wrapping those up hopefully by the end of July here. And so August will be that point in time where, um, you know, I, I don't have to wait for any audits to be complete or anything. So I think we'll, um, be, be able to get that in, hopefully mid-August, if not by the end of August.
Thank you. Any other questions related to this report? Much appreciated. And certainly as council, as you are digesting this further, if you have other questions, I know Patrick and Sandy are always happy to answer them. So feel free to reach out. Thank you, Sandy, for the detail tonight. Much appreciated. All right, we are going to transition then, um, onto our next step. And as I mentioned earlier, if we're not in audit season, we're, we're in budget season. So we're, we are going to move right into budget season. Um, part of your packet was a budget process outline and timeline. Uh, Patrick, you want to walk us through that this evening?
Sure. Um, we have two items regarding the budget tonight. One is, uh, a proposed timeline for discussion of the budget. And the second one will be if and what the council priorities may be for that budget. Um, we've included in the packet a budget timeline. Um, you can pretty much disregard anything that the staff does, you know, above, the July dates. Uh, but what we're anticipating is that we, um, begin our budget discussion with the council workshop on August 17th. And follow that up with a workshop on the 24th and August 31st, if needed, which most times they probably are. Uh, in September, as its tradition, we have to adopt a proposed property tax levy. Again, that is only an estimate and, but we do have to file it to the state to tell them what we're thinking our, our property tax levy will be. So we will have a recommendation after, in September, after we go through some of the budget discussions and, work through all the, uh, the submissions by the departments. Uh, so that'll happen, but before the end of September, we will then again, uh, let it rest for a month or so, or maybe a couple of weeks, I should say. And go back in and try to have a budget workshop on October 12th to give the council a chance to, uh, have a preview of the final budget. And what's included in there. And then it's anticipated on the 14th of December, we'll hold a public hearing for, for the budget levy. And the council will be ready to adopt the budget. So then at the end of, by the end of the month, December, Sandy will certify that budget. So that's the outline of the schedule. We think it's a, a good one. We think that we should be able to discuss everything we need to do in those workshops. We are anticipating, uh, different information from the state than we've had last year. We don't know where that's going to go. We don't know how fast that's going to come out. That may be a challenge, a little more of a challenge for us this year as compared to last year. We don't know what local shares and how they're going to, to prioritize the cities and if we're going to be cut or if we're not going to be cut. So we'll be waiting to see what the decisions out of, uh, St. Paul are going to be. We don't, we, we don't anticipate it to being too draconian, but, um, and I anticipate there'll be some kind of reduction in state shares, probably across the board, based on early figures from the state with the loss of revenue and all the COVID expenses. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, then, in, in within this timeframe, we will also be still working on the 10-year plan. Um, hopefully, I don't have a stra, uh, solid timeframe of when that's going to be complete. We met with Ellers already once to go over initial information. We're doing some homework now on this side that we have to bring back to them. Uh, hopefully within those budget discussions in late August, maybe September, maybe even October, we don't know yet. Uh, we will talk about a 10-year plan and how that relates to the 2021 budget and beyond. So we're working hard on the 10-year plan. Uh, hopefully we can finish some of that. We're, we're looking at, you know, major expenses that we have. We anticipate over the next 10 years, based on some of the priorities we've heard out of council in the past. We're looking at, we need additional staff and other items that, that will be in a 10-year plan. So, uh, that's still kind of meshing together, but we'll get, we'll get that to you hopefully sooner than later. Questions on the schedule?
Council member Beistrum?
It's not really a question on the schedule. I, I think it's a question on timing of some of our budget items for this year. Um, are we deferring the hiring, given the, given the slow start to parks, trails and lakes? Are we considering deferring that for a bit? Or are we going to move forward on that?
Well, we haven't intentionally deferred it, but we haven't, with all the, the recent up, you know, two things have happened here. One is COVID-19 has thrown us a little bit off our game here, and we don't know exactly how we'd interview and set that up. And, um, the second one was that, and not going back to a sore subject, but the golf course. Um, we're anticipating that if the city had to take over the golf course and run it ourselves with city staff, that that person would be more guided to daily operations of the golf course. So we have to reinvent that job description and, and bring it back up. And I would like to fill that position. I don't think, uh, being that, I believe it was budgeted a half year anyways.
Right.
So I, I don't believe we should wait on that, uh, until next year. Uh, I think our, our finances will be good enough that we can slot that in. It may not happen until September or something, but I, I believe we still need that kind of position.
And I don't just, I don't disagree with that. I just thought there may be a delay, given everything else being delayed.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll get to it as soon as we can. Uh, you know, we have to, again, like I said, rewrite the job description and figure out how we're going to interview and advertise it. We'll get there with that one.
Other questions about budget process? I think the, um, the, the calendar that's been laid out makes sense. Um, I, one thing I don't see on the plan, um, and we don't necessarily need it, um, specifically articulated to us, but certainly, um, some of the boards and commissions that we have that have some impact on the plan. Um, it'd be great to have dedicated budget workshop sessions penciled in with them. Um, in particular, I think about EDA. Um, I think about parks, lakes and trails. Um, certainly, you know, airport has a, a budget as well. And I know that that's kind of built into their standard work plan that, um, Dan manages with that commission. Just want to make sure we've got their engagement at the right level at the right time.
No, that's, that's a good point.
Right. And I'm, I know I'm missing some in that list. I know planning commission doesn't typically have, have direct spend, but, you know, certainly, um, some of our other commissions do, so.
Yep, we will, we'll make sure that happens. It's a good point.
We're going to kind of trends, our, our next topic of conversation is also budget related, but I don't want to cut off any other kind of logistics questions around calendar. If council has any or feedback items at this point. Not seeing any. We will transition then. And our next discussion item this evening is, um, to talk specifically and get feedback from council on, um, 2021 budget priorities. Um, and Patrick, I'll let you kind of tee this up further.
Sure. Uh, what we need to do is obviously, uh, the council has keep many people talking to them. You have your own ideas, what we should be doing, uh, in the next year. We began last year by, when we refinanced the bond and put $4 billion on the streets to begin to address some of the major issues that, that I and you, I believe also, thought were on the table. And so I would like to get your input about what you still think is on the table, if there's things that we need to add or look at. Not just even for this year, but at least get it off and on the table so that if we can't address it in one year, we, we have a record of it that we can go down and try to figure out how to solve those issues, you know, 22 or 23 or 24, things like that. So, uh, if you have anything you'd like to mention today, that'd be great. If not, you can, you know, send me an email, call me on the phone. We'll, we'll figure that out. But it's kind of open up to you and what you see as priorities right now.
Council member Beistrum?
I think the, the only thing that comes to mind for me at this point is that our strategic plan should be driving our budget. You know, I mean, other, other than kind of our normal operations, um, any budget adds, I think should be driven by the strategic plan. So, and I, I, I don't know if we've, if we've kind of mapped that out in some sort of cadence. You know, I, I mean, I know you've got the priorities there and some timelines attached to that. But I guess that would be my, my guiding document in terms of any additions that we, or any other considerations that we need um, to have with regard to budget needs.
Yeah. And I believe the, the strategic plan where that really comes in is parks, lakes and trails, like Mayor mentioned before, and having a budget, a session with them. And the 10-year plan is the other thing that's, that's driving, and will even drive the budget more as the years follow. So we're aware of both of those. It's really the major, um, budget, really true budget items there.
So I, um, agree with council member Beistrum and, um, think, you know, the same thing around my, my, you know, large spend items. My mind immediately goes to what are the things that we've set as part of the strategic, strategic plan? And certainly, you know, broad, broad scope, agree with that approach. I do think there is an opportunity for things that might be smaller in spend, but bigger in impact, that maybe don't have a home, that need to have a home and maybe won't find a home unless we're bringing them up in forums like this. So I have a couple of items that I guess, I guess I, I jotted down a couple of things to talk about. And some of them are things that are related to the strategic plan, and it's more of a question of mechanics and timing. And then I have a couple of smaller items that aren't specifically spelled out in this strategic plan, but I think we've got some timing considerations in our community that we might want to mention. So I guess maybe to just to get, get into it, the, the 10 year financial plan that Patrick mentioned, I guess I'd be looking at staff to, you know, we haven't finalized that. And there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of ongoing moving pieces in that plan. And so, you know, a 10 year financial plan, you kind of finalize it on one day and it's, it's a working document. But I would ask for anything that we need to accelerate or anything that needs specific budget focus, that we should be looking at that during this budget season for anything that may need to be funded as part of that 10 year plan. And certainly those items that are more near term. We should be taking a look at that, and I would expect that those are already somewhat aligned to our strategic plan, but obviously we're at, we have an opportunity to get to the next layer of detail, and I look forward to that. We have, I, the, you know, the EDA has a footprint in our strategic plan. But I think as we think about tactical funding for that group, and I'll mention this in our working session with them as well. I know this will be a topic of conversation with them. I think we've got a couple of things going on with the kickoff that will be happening later in July with the downtown committee being prepared to meet that group where they might be from a budget support standpoint. And then also the game has changed a bit for EDA. And certainly we will still be in COVID recovery for 2021. And so we may be looking for some additional EDA funding or for that to look differently than it did in 2020. And an item that I would kind of look for some additional guidance from them, and I think council should be prepared for as well. We mentioned parks and I, you know, Kathy, this almost is on your radar as well. I, I would welcome a joint budget workshop, maybe with the Parks, Lakes and Trails. Talk about where they are today. I know they also are kind of coming out of COVID programming, but it'd be good to kind of get outside of that and think a little bit longer term. And however, we can support that for council if it's, they have a workshop and we looked to a joint workshop. We, other than the, we did a tactical discussion with them on the golf course. We haven't had a joint perks workshop for a while, so I think we're overdue anyway. And however, we can tee that up, I'd welcome that opportunity. And I just had two smaller items from a dollar size perspective, but I think important for our community and things that may not otherwise come up in the strategic plan. I know the senior center is under, you know, I think Sharon has announced her, now her, her retirement. And I know that there is a natural transition happening there. Something we should be, I know Kathy, you've got your eye on this ball already, but something we should be keeping in mind as we are. What, whatever that next step looks like. Just wants us to be a good partner in that. Go ahead.
And, and I would add, I've been communicating with Jamie on that a bit too. So I believe that's on her radar, and I think she's been rolling some of those thoughts and ideas up to Patrick. Is kind of my, my understanding. So, and, and I think, you know, I, I agree with you about maybe pushing the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission to really start this visioning process. This is a good time for them. With maybe not quite as much on their plates as they would have in a normal year. And so maybe really spending some time over the course of the next month or two here, really thinking solidly about what, what they would like to see happen in the long term and where we might need some funding or where, where we may need some, to consider some additional funding for them in 2021. So, agree.
Some of those might be $20, $21. Some of those might be things that we find of, you know, a near term home on the longer 10 year plan, but certainly I think, yeah, I think we're at a good point, especially because there's so many of those strategic plan items that kind of roll up under that commission. So. And then finally, the, the last item I jotted down just to kick off for conversation. You know, I had mentioned and presented to council thoughts on our next steps related to our Human Rights Commission and what we might do to partner and support the activities that are happening with the YMCA and the Forest Lake Area School District on the Everyone Belongs Project. We, you know, that went on hold pre-COVID for a timing, the timing consideration on the district part, districts part, and then that was delayed even further, unfortunately, because of COVID. I, those conversations are still ongoing, and the plan is for that group to get together again in the fall and to do that community visioning session. There is an opportunity for us to partner further financially in that proposition. And I really think that we have a great opportunity, just A, in what's happening today in our world, and then also we have an ongoing need related to what are our next steps related to the Human Rights Commission that I would like to see us further explore, explore supporting that, that partnership. And probably with that partnership means some additional funding support. There's a number of ways that we can tee that up and be a partner to that work. But I would like us to consider that here this summer. And, and if council agrees, get some dollars into 2021 to kind of memorialize our commitment to that project. Those are the items I had on my, I had on my plate. And again, some larger items from a dollar perspective. And then again, some smaller things that I would, smaller as in dollar size, that I would like to keep us front and center as we're kind of having this budget conversation this year. Other items, what else haven't we talked about that maybe we should get on radar? I'm not seeing anything. And certainly this is conversation one of many over the next weeks and months. And so certainly as things come up, let's certainly get them slotted into the work plan so that we're getting the right work done at the right time for the right consideration. All right, council, before we leave this budget, budget conversation, anything further we need to consider at this time? And I guess I would ask Patrick, anything further you need from council at this time?
Not right now, but if, if you're driving, well, you're not driving home now. But if you're walking, taking a walk or something, and you think of something, just let me know and we'll try to see what we can do.
That's good, thank you. We are going to transition then to staff updates, and then we'll follow that up with council updates. And then we will be moving into a closed session for the remainder of our meeting. And so let's start with our staff updates here. Let's start with Patrick. Let's start with Patrick, and then we'll go to Chief Peterson afterwards.
Okay, thank you. I really only have one item, and most of you know already, the, the state legislature adjourned from the special assessment. Unfortunately, they failed to do anything at all that would benefit Forest Lake. We had two items that we were, and still are watching closely. One is the, the COVID recovery funds from the CARE Act, which is we were slated in, they had a bipartisan agreement that would have sent the $1 million five to, to Forest Lake to cover expenses and to help us out that way. And then we also had $1 million in the bonding bill for lift stations that they haven't gotten to the bonding bill either. So both of those seem to be on hold. And I, I believe the CARE money, CARE money will come through sooner or later. They have to, the feds have to do that. I think the governor may take that action on its own. But I don't know where the bonding bill stands. We have no idea if that's going to go or not go. So those are really the only two things right now we have.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions for Patrick this evening? Seeing any, let's go Chief Peterson, then after Chief Peterson, we'll go to our Chief Newman.
Mayor, city council members, good evening. Well, for the first time in a long time, I don't have any updates for you, but if you have any questions for me, I'm ready.
Any questions for Chief this evening? All right, very good, thank you, Chief Newman. And then after Chief Newman, let's go to Dan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I also have nothing unless you have something for me.
Anything for Chief Newman this evening? All right. I guess actually, my question for both of you is, you know, I know that the City of Forest Lake Legion organized activities over the 4th of July are not occurring, not scheduled, which is a great answer from a COVID perspective. I, I think it means we've got a little bit more of a wild card from a public safety perspective on what people are going to be, how they're going to be occupying their time over that holiday weekend. Just good to hear from you on thoughts around staffing and kind of public safety response to 4th of July, given it's coming up. Any thoughts to share with us this evening?
Yeah, from go ahead, Rick.
From a police standpoint, we have been working with area businesses that are planning on staying open. We're also waiting for the governor to give an update on any other updates on executive order and, you know, turning the dial a little bit more. So we're waiting for that. But we have been working with businesses, keeping in communication with them. And we are going to have some extra staffing out there because it is an unknown. But we do realize that people are going to be coming out, even though there isn't a, you know, a carnival or parade or fireworks. So you will definitely see the officers out there on bike patrol and some extra patrol out on the squad cars.
Great, thank you. Anything else to add, Chief Newman?
Rick can answer it all. Thank you, Rick.
Good. Thank you both. And let's go to Dan, and after Dan, we'll pick up Peter.
No major updates tonight. Just want to let everybody know that I have been having problems tonight getting the YouTube livestream to work. But I will get the, I am recording this to my computer, so I will get that encoded and up on the site first thing tomorrow morning. So, so this meeting did not livestream, because I could not get the livestream to work. But the backup recording will be encoded and up tomorrow.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan this evening? Peter, after Peter, we'll go to Ryan.
Your Honor, I don't have any update for you this evening. Happy to answer questions if there are any.
Any questions for Peter this evening? Not seeing any. We will go to Ryan after Ryan, let's go to Donovan.
Mayor, city council, Ryan Goodman, city engineer. Full swing construction, local street project started today. Obviously, the Goodview 97 projects going well there, making progress on that. Tuculco project will start soon too, on the local streets and crack filling. Other than that, I guess today went live with the public engagements for the Public Open House for Everton Avenue. I didn't see anything come from the county, so I'll request that tomorrow, get a link and work with Dan and have that updated on the website. But if you gotta kind of really know what you're doing on the website to find it. So I'll send a link to right away before we get done here to Karen, and she can send it out to everybody too. But one promote that, so we get good response on that, and that's all I really have at this point. Any questions?
Any questions for Ryan? Not seeing any, thank you. And Donovan, we'll go Sandy after Donovan.
Mayor, members of council, I, my update is that the planning commission is meeting this week. They have two thing, two projects on their agenda. One is the Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage, a preliminary PUD, CUP and Complan Amendment application. That's for a site that's north of the MinDOT yard on the west side of I-35 on Everton Avenue. And then also there's a Headwaters 123 zoning map amendment and plan amendment, some, some more headwaters action there. And happy to take any questions from council.
Any questions for Donovan this, this evening? I guess just a heads up for Donovan, and, or a heads up for all of you related to Donovan's area. The staff has been working with the team at Settled and Faith Lutheran Church on the tiny home community that they are considering. We are working on calendaring a joint workshop between council and planning commission on that topic. And we'll be getting that on everyone's calendar. We're just trying to determine calendars and best time. Probably a good opportunity to get everybody on the same page and do a joint workshop. So just heads up for your future calendars. We'll go Sandy and Karen after Sandy.
I have nothing further to add unless there's any further questions.
Anything else for Sandy this evening? Karen, anything from you this evening?
Mayor, council, I have no updates.
Very good. And Amanda, I know you're on, welcome to, thank you for being on, always happy to have you. And I don't mean to exclude you from staff updates, assuming you are included as part of Peter's update. So glad you're here.
Thank you.
I think we have, I think I've gotten all of staff. Let's transition to mayor and council updates. We'll start with council member Husnig, and then we'll go to council member Bystrum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, the only thing that really happened is I, I met with the folks at the American Legion and, and they gave me a box of American flags to donate to the City of Forest Lake. It was flags, they're American flags, and there's Minnesota flags, and I think some POW flags and that kind of thing. They're missing in action flags. But the whole thing amounted to about $1,000 for the donation to the City of Forest Lake. So, yeah, what happened is the American Legion does it one year, and the VFW does it the other. So it's kind of a, it would just happen to be there a year. So I delivered those flags to Dave and a couple of days ago, so he's, has in his hand and will be using them here in the city. So that's all I have.
That's great, and many thanks to the Legion. Councilmember Bystrum, and then we'll go council member Monson.
Just a couple of things. The senior center is considering another extension of their closure until probably the second week in August. There are some meetings happening though around protocols that they will be putting in place. I'm actually going to meet with them on Friday to talk about the position, the interviews, and then just to hear kind of what they're thinking around protocols in place and have connected them with Minnesota Department of Health as well. So ironically, or maybe not so ironically, the Minnesota Department of Health doesn't really have specific protocols related to senior centers. Kind of this model, we've got senior living, you know, senior daycare where they're there for an extended period of time. But there are some other great resources out there from the National Council on Aging and those sorts of things. So I'm sure they'll be able to work through it. I think there's a little trepidation there, and that's not a bad thing, you know, at this point. And then just a Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, little summary. At their meeting this week, they've agreed to waive shelter reservations and gazebo fees for up to four hours per reservation, kind of in alignment with some of the work that we did with the Fenway Agreement. And to really ensure access for citizens who are really needing to have those safe outdoor spaces together right now. They have, they're updating their park event permit application to include a disclaimer that those submitting the application agree to comply with all of the executive orders, MDH and CDC guidelines when using park space. And then they're starting to think and plan and implement around some summer events in light of the transformation of Arts in the Park. July is National Park and Rec Month, and they're talking about some things. Farmer's Market kicks off on July 7th, but they're talking about some other just easy, kind of fun things potentially to do by But they're talking about some other just easy kind of fun things, potentially to do, bike family scavenger hunt, Food Truck Tuesday is a beanbag tournament, some of those sorts of things, depending upon Jamie's ability to be able to pull things together kind of quickly. And then just one, I did receive a citizen communication around the Faith Lutheran Sacred Settlement. So I'm glad to hear that we're going to have some discussion, conversation around that at some point. So.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Monson?
I have just one quick update. I attended the Forest Lake Athletic Association meeting last week. And really, they're just planning as the dials turn how to bring youth sports back to Forest Lake. So that's kind of exciting, and really planning for fall and what that's going to look like for sports like football. So probably more to come on that. But it's, it's great to see them planning to get the kids together again.
Yeah, for sure. That's good. Thank you. Just a couple of quick updates from me that I, I've touched on a little, both of these topics already. So EDA meeting this evening, we reviewed further discussion, had further discussion on revitalizing our business retention and expansion program. Dan walked us through a detailed work plan on what that might look like. And we are targeting a fall kickoff for that. Also, we will be looking to partner with the Chamber on that work. And there is some work to be done by staff on both sides to further take this high-level plan and to get it into something that is closer to executable. So happy to have that work continue, and also have another opportunity to partner with the Chamber. And then we also, emails went out reminding or to bring together again that downtown working group. We are looking to have that group kickoff, or rescheduled kickoff for the Fourth Monday in July. And I know some of you were active in recruiting members for that. So please reengage with your contacts that you've been talking to about that work. Because again, it's, we'd like to have a solid kickoff in July. Structure of that is still a bit to be determined based on our meeting structure at that point. But we are trying to keep the work moving along. And then also, just a quick note related to the Everyone Belongs community conversations and the implicit bias learning sessions that have been sponsored by the YMCA, the Forest Lake Area School Districts and surrounding communities. I attended the first session. The YMCA team is masterful in their facilitation of that. We had about 50 people on the call, 50 people on a Zoom call that then had breakout sessions. It was, it was really well done. There is another session tomorrow. And if you look on, I think, the City of Forest Lake's Facebook page, there's a link to both sign up and then the additional such sessions that have been scheduled. I would encourage everyone to find an hour and a half and to be part of those conversations, and then also to be part of the implicit bias follow-up training session. It's just great content, timely to what's going on in our world today, and a great opportunity to hear the thoughts of our community members and just where people are, where, where people are in this moment. And it's great input to inform our future work. So would encourage everyone to participate in those. We've, there were about 50 people in the first session. I think in total, that whole series, there's about 300 individual people signed up for at least both sessions, or at least one of those sessions over the next six weeks. So that's a great turnout as well. So. Um, we have, our next agenda item is a closed session. I believe council has a motion. Peter, go ahead.
Your Honor, Councilmembers, there are two items on your agenda, items 11 and 12, because these closed sessions are completely unrelated to each other. However, because we won't be returning to open session between them, we need a single motion to move into closed session to cover both matters. I'd be happy to script that for you. I believe you have, one of you has the language, but I'm happy to walk you through it if necessary.
Mayor Bane, I move to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D, dot zero five subdivision three B, pursuant to attorney-client privilege for confidential attorney-client discussion regarding settlement negotiations in the matter of Lakeview Farms of Forest Lake LLC versus Forest Hill Farm Owners Association and City of Forest Lake, and for a confidential attorney-client discussion regarding the Airport Hangar 15 arbitration demand. The closed meeting will be held in a separate Zoom conference room and will commence immediately. Once the closed meeting is completed, the City Council will reconvene the open meeting portion of tonight's City Council meeting in this Zoom room meeting. There being no further items on the agenda, once back in open session, the council will simply adjourn the meeting.
Are we, thank you, Councilmember Bystrum. Before we vote on that session, just a quick logistics note to make sure everyone's got the link to the second Zoom meeting, because we are going to close out of this one and open a second. Just quick confirmation, everyone has that? All right, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second? Councilmember Bystrum?
Want a clarification? Will we stay in that other room to come back into such, open session then?
I think we have to come back to this original room.
I know we stayed in that room one other time, so I just wanted to know what the-
Would be to come back into this room. I'll leave this meeting room open.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll pause everything on this one. We'll go to the other Zoom meeting room, which is running on a different computer right now. I will, once the closed session is over, we'll re-log into this one and close up this one, since this is the open meeting.
Okay.
So you just bring it back up to speed then, Dan? Is that what you're going to do? We don't have to type back into this meeting room? Is that what you're saying?
You have the link back in using the email link to get into, that you use to get into this one.
Okay, all right.
And Councilmembers, just an abundance of caution, the security person, I mean, he's always working. I would encourage you to leave this meeting as you are leaving this meeting so that your audio isn't left open inadvertently. All right, we have a motion to close the meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All those, Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Member Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Monson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bystrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye. And we are moving to closed session. Thank you, everybody. We have a quorum of council, and so we are, I will entertain a reopen the meeting.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Husnick, and a second from Councilmember Bystrum. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Monson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bystrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye. And not having anything further on our agenda this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Monson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bystrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for the time this evening. Have a great night, and we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye.